To our first workshop of 2018. Today, I've asked Commissioner Ronnie Richardson to open with some invocation and the pledge, if you can stand.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the new year. Grateful, Lord, for new beginnings. We're grateful for opportunities that you place before us to do your will in our communities. Lord, we thank you that we can come together and talk about, discuss, community issues, Lord, that are important, that need to be addressed. We pray that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions. It would help us to be listeners and follow your will. We ask you, Lord, to watch over and care for us this meeting and guide and direct our thoughts. We pray these things in Christ's name and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item and only item on the agenda is discuss future plans of the Douglas Center. At, I believe, our last board meeting, we had approved restrooms and were discussing a pavilion. And I believe that at that time, the board decided there was a need for the further discussion on what the direction was going to be before they proceeded with spending the money on the pavilion. So that's what we're here for today. And I'll either turn it over to Mr. Harris or Mr. Fleming, if any, either one of you have something you want to present or get started with.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I'd like to take a stab at it, or going to take a stab at it, but there's some concerns and some, at our meeting when we approved to put the restrooms on and the pavilion, I made it plainly, on public record, that was the thing that I wanted to do, put the restrooms on and put the pavilion on the back. After much discussion, it came to just putting the restrooms on until the first of the year that we decided where this money was going to be coming from, well, discussing putting the pavilion on the back.
Yes, sir.
It has come to where the audience is feeling, I'm glad to see people here today. Happy New Year. But we have some, there may be some questions that may need to be asked. What, you know, some things, and I'm quite sure that we have some answers, whatever you, you know, you want to know and find out.
Well, that's why we're having it in the form of a workshop today, is that a workshop, there can be no action taken, only discussion. And this is the best opportunity for the board to discuss, as well as community input. So if there's concerns or questions, I'm hoping that we can get them answered today and get on a unified path to get started on, on this project. Mr. Harris, do you have anything that you want to start with, or does the board, any other members?
Mr. Chairman.
I'll comment real quick, though, just if we might, just to, as we get into it, again, because we're trying to keep a record of all of this stuff, anybody that's going to be speaking, let's not all just stand up, you know, in the audience and everything. Let's try to make it orderly. If you have to form a little line or something over here by the podium so that we can get it recorded. And if you come up to the podium to speak, please identify yourself by your name and your address before you address the board for me. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, if you like, I'll just go through the brief history.
Yes, sir.
You want to do that?
No, no. Let's, let's, let's hear some statements, and then we go. I can do the brief.
You want to open up with public comment and concern?
Yes, I prefer that there be public comments, then we know how to, how to answer the questions that need to be asked.
All right. Well, I can agree with that. If anybody wants to make a comment or has any questions, if you want to step to the podium, we'll get started with hearing comments and questions.
I'm Robert Ford, and my address is 8896 135th Loop, Live Oak, Florida. And again, good afternoon. I'd like to thank Mr. Chairman and the board for holding this workshop, for we kind of discuss, I guess, the Douglas Center in general, in this forum, for we could kind of have some discussion to kind of highlight, you know, where we come from and where we hope to go with the Douglas site out on the west side. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I could kind of give some kind of comments and stuff, and I'm not sure if you got a time limit on it or anything, but if you see I'm getting a little lengthy, you could kind of give me the high sign. It's always your prerogative as the chairman.
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm Robert Ford, and I've been serving as the president of the Douglas Alumni Association for the last three years. If I could kind of make some kind of disclaimer at this point, in that sometime I may use the word "they," but it's not inclusive when I use the word "they," because, and I'm using it as a blank statement, because lots of people on the board has been very supportive and have a lot of outreach to us as an association and the community in the discussion of the Douglas Center. So if I make that disclaimer, but it is a era of kind of, you know, we kind of put a lot of political correctness behind, so I want to put some political correctness kind of behind us during my discussion, if I may, Mr. Prevett. Again, as an association, you know, sometime we kind of think the way our proposals have been submitted to the county, that we have some kind of radical agenda going on. Most of our proposals have been completely snubbed and no action taken on them, and sometime that could get kind of discouraged. And so I just want to kind of say that, but just kind of let you know who we are, you know. We're the Douglas Alumni Association, and, you know, our mission and purpose is just to preserve the legacy of Douglas High School and the Douglas Center, and how the legacy has affected the people in Swanee County and beyond. Our association is open to, not only to traditional Douglas graduates, but it's open to everyone, every individual, community, organizations, anyone who subscribe to our objective, which is to preserve the legacy of the Douglas Center. However, there, you know, is a fee that's involved to become a member, but, you know, a lot of people support you, but, you know, when you say it's going to cost you an annual fee, a lot of folks don't want to join you, but they, they do support you, and that is evident by the folks that we have here this afternoon. I would like to thank them for coming out this afternoon. Our membership consists of just normal folks. We do have some medical doctors, Douglas graduates, non-graduates, we've got retired military, retired law enforcement officers, we've got educators, active and retired, we got state, city, and county employees, the city manager, city council members, just to name a few. However, we do not have any county officials that are members of Douglas Association. And we, I think we do some great things as association, representing the Douglas Association in the community. Now, we do offer scholarships, we sponsor programs in the school, we sponsor the Veterans' Day Parade, we volunteer annually at the fair, at the cornball boil station, and we have done some big, last year we did a big thing. When they, I'm going to use that disclaimer again, it's not everyone, when they said, you know, the boys restroom at the Douglas Gym could not be repaired economically, it was so deteriorated, but the county, but the board, you know, graciously gave us the approval as association to take on that project as a self-help program, and we did it. We went in and we did the piping and did new fixtures in it, and it is a totally functional facility out there at the Douglas Center. You know, we put new fans in the restroom, new murals, where, you know, we've got no support from the county in doing that. And so, again, stop by and see it, it's totally functional, but it still needs painting. It's, it looks kind of bad because the paint is peeling inside, so you could help us out there by, you know, getting that facility painted, if you could. All the relevant facts, all the relevant facts point that the Douglas Center is a uniquely historical site and facility based on African-American culture. And during the discussion in the past, you know, that kind of falls to the backside, in my view. No one talks about the historical significance or this historical, it should be a historical site, you know, that's kind of conveniently kind of left off. And it is, and it is a dichotomy on this point right here. What I'm saying is this, you know, some people is kind of refusing to accept that point, that it is a historical site. Now, as such, you know, the Douglas Center, you know, can be designated as a historical site by the State Historical Commission, basically solely on African-American culture. You know, usually it has to be over 50 years old, and it has some impact on the community at large. And I think it meets those things, and with the right impetus behind it, we could get that done. You would think that a person that grew up in this community, you know, would proudly, you know, champion that cause, you know, making it a historical site right here. Instead, you know, we have people that actively opposing that, and opposing us on every turn when we advocate trying to get it designated as a historical site. I'm putting, you know, these political correctness behind me, this is a workshop, may not get this opportunity again, and I thank you again for allowing me to discuss it this way. But let me just, you know, go into this right here. In earnest, the Douglas Center began on May 1st, 1950. In discussing the Douglas Center, we just can't start in the middle of the story, 1950. You know, the Douglas Center, you know, origin goes back to right after the Civil War, during the Reconstruction period there, when Swanee County in 1869 allocated two schools for Swanee County, African-American schools in Swanee County, one in the town of Live Oak and one in Houston. Now, school in Live Oak was called the Free School at the time. It would be later named after the American, the great American abolitionist Frederick Douglass. Now, Frederick Douglass was more than just an abolitionist, you know, he was a noted writer and speaker, he was a spokesman, powerful speaker, and he was like, you know, Dr. MLK Jr. of the 1800s. So that's who the Douglas Center, Douglas was named after. Now, the Douglas Center is the third school in Swanee County to carry the name Douglas. Now, the first Douglas was located on the west side of Houston Avenue, in the area of Mr. Stevens' barbershop. Now, it's not really clear, but, you know, but according to some reports by Eric Musgrove, the county's historian, it was built sometime prior to 1912. Second Douglas, it was built in the 1920s, and most folks of my generation kind of fondly, affectionately call it, you know, Old Douglas. It was located on the east side of the 400 block of Houston Avenue, a little bit south of Ebenezer Emory Church. Now, the Douglas Center is uniquely historic in that its purpose and design was to house a new, a new elementary school, a new junior high school, and a new high school for African-Americans. Now, in 1950, when the concept of the Douglas Center was approved, in a historical perspective, other things was going on. You know, around the country, lawsuits was being filed in federal courts, challenging the substandard conditions under which African-Americans was treated under the separate but equal doctrine. Many states was moving to upgrade its African-American schools to head off a Supreme Court ruling like the Brown v. Education, which in 1954 overturned the separate but equal doctrine. Here in Swanee County, the Douglas Center Initiative was consolidate and phase out all of those rural elementary schools, over 20 at that time, throughout the county. The reason why they had, you know, so many of these one-room rural schools, because it was simple, you know, they didn't give African-Americans school buses. So all the schools had to be in each community within three to five miles and walking distance of each other. So that's why they had so many schools at that time. These schools only went up to the eighth grade, so no high school education was given to African-Americans during this era. Buses were only appropriated for African-Americans when the Douglas Center was coming online, you know, to provide for the first time for all rural African-Americans a secondary education level, nine through 12. The major impact of this was that most African-Americans lived in rural areas, they didn't have access to a high school, they just lived out there. That was my situation right here with me and my family. Now, we're not talking about the post-Civil War period at this time, we're talking about in my lifetime, in the 1950s. You know, this what was going on. In addition, there was a proposal to house a junior college on the Douglas Center site for African-Americans. 1952, the first elementary school, that first wing was built for elementary school, you know, at that time, and funding was subsequently approved for the cafeteria on that site, then the junior high, then the high school during that time. Now, most of you would probably be convinced that on this basis, on African-American culture, the Douglas Center is a historical site. The Douglas Center has a direct connection to two American philanthropists. One name is Anna Jean Thomas and Julius Rosenbaum. Anna Jean Thomas and Joseph Rosenbaum. Go home and Google these people. So we've got a deep history here that these people, that that school has a connection to. Now, local patrons, local patrons and benefactors like George and Dorothy Ayer, they're the uncle and aunt of Mr. Prevett's predecessor, the county attorney, Ms. Louise Pompey. We know the old, she was old, she was old when I was coming along, she was an old African-American widow. And Joseph Aaron and Elise, Elise and Josephine Aaron, those people donated property. They signed property over to bring the fruition of Douglas Center. All this stuff goes into the history of that school, okay? In spite of knowing all of this, there are Douglas Center historical deniers.
Can I stop you right there for one second?
Yes, sir.
The denials, at what level are they coming from?
From?
The state level?
No, no, sir. Here, right here.
I have to disagree from you on that, from the board's perspective.
Right, right, okay.
Because the board has approved multiple times that we were going to apply to the state for state historical notice, and the state hasn't done it.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much for that point of order.
I just don't want everybody looking here saying that we're denying it. It hadn't been this board that has denied that.
If you just give me just a few suckers, and I try to tie that in, and then we could kind of entertain that just a little bit further, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, these, what was I saying? These deniers have effectively created a false narrative based on subjective supposition of poorly constructed historical grant applications. This is my point right here.
I got you.
Right, okay? These, it was poorly constructed, that's why they denied it right there. I don't think I need to go any further, but I will talk about it if we want to go in a little bit deeper.
On the grants that were applied?
On the grant, right, right, poorly constructed, okay?
That's the ones that you and Mr. Massey worked on?
Well, you could say that, okay? Let me just kind of explain that, since he interjected, that he said, Mr. Massey and I worked on, Mr. Massey is, was the staff officer responsible for submitting the grants. After these grants were denied, and I finally got a copy of the grant, I called Mr. Grant, Mr. Massey, and I talked to him about why these things was done. Of course, you know, the same information that probably the board got was, well, they said this and that, but I pressed him on, I said, well, how many grants have you ever applied for? Historical grants. Now, historical grants kind of specialize, you need some specialized training, and I think I sent a letter out right here, if I could interject this. Now, a few months ago, when the Historical Commission applied for a grant, historical grant for the Freight Depot, now, I think those folks in the Historical Commission is probably have more information and probably more competent in the grant application than county staff.
I agree with you.
Right, okay. Now, what did they do? They hired a historical consultant to help them with that grant. That's kind of tell us that it's kind of complicated, that when these grants was applied for in 2014, 2015, they were poorly constructed. And I kind of stand by that, you know, political correctness aside. I hope I'm, nobody take offense to my language, but I want to...
I just wanted to clarify that the denial is coming from the state level.
Right, right, right.
Despite the construction, the county's never been in the business of applying for historical grants, and that is the sole reason that the Historical Commission that you just referenced is in existence. The only buildings that Swanee County, I believe, has ever preserved or applied for any historical grants on have been the courthouse and the train depot, and the Douglas Center. But to get the train depot done, a Historical Commission was set aside, and then the property was given to the Historical Commission to apply for the grants on behalf of that building. So that's, that's how that come about. So the Historical Commission has been completely responsible for that building, which used to be a county building, which now belongs to the, to the Historical Commission.
Absolutely correct.
Yes, sir.
You're absolutely correct, and I appreciate that. But the point I'm making is that those folks on the Historical Commission, like Eric Musgrove and Mr. Hale and all those other people, very competent in this area, where I'm not going to throw Mr. Massey under the bus, Mr. Massey was an excellent staff officer, did great things during his tenure in the county, but you could look at his record in this area, and that's the point I'm making right here, is the point that those grants that were submitted are poorly constructed grants. Now, I'm not a expert on grants, I know nothing about grants until I was contacted saying that they was going to submit these grants, did I have any information on it? I gave them what I had, not knowing what was going to go into the grants, but those grants were rejected, they were poorly constructed grants. Okay, if I may proceed. Now, but what I'm talking about deniers, or deniers, I'm going to say it, you know, within the administration. When I brought up about the gymnasium attaching those restrooms on the back may affect, you know, future grant opportunities for the gymnasium, the reply was given, I'm paraphrasing, is that the state has already spoken on this, it's not historical. So that's what I based my supposition on, that is a historical deniers. Now, these deniers, they have the power of office behind them, okay? Okay, they, my disclaimer, not everyone right here can control the agenda, they can control spending taxpayers' dollars, you know, simply to insert task orders in the agenda to obtain facet drawings and reports. Mr. Prevett, I know you may, you're kind of chomping at the bits over there, I'm not implying that they did, that what they did is improper or anything, but I'm just trying to, you know, highlight, you know, you know, you know, you know, how power can move things, okay? I'm not implying that, but that's just simply implying that this is, this is what happened, okay? Okay, they can empanel advisory committees to effectively silence the opposition, okay? They can, they can get staff members with only a familiarity, you know, of historical process, you know, to talk to you about things, while at the same time, they have resisted a request to secure a historical professional. They, I want to give this a disclaimer again, they can spend scarce, Douglas Center set aside resources on reports when examined closely, they serve no real legitimate purpose, and I think one of the reports is probably in the packet that we're going to look at today. It don't really serve no purpose in that case. Okay, they, they can use the deteriorated condition of the Douglas Center to justify...
You didn't smile.
Hey, you want to come back again right there? They can use the deteriorated condition of the Douglas Center to keep from doing any maintenance out there. I think you could kind of call that kind of self-fulfilling prophecy, you know, you kind of starve it to death, you let it get deteriorated, and then when you ask them to do something about it, they say, well, it's too far gone, we can't do anything, that's self-fulfilling prophecy right there. Okay, by the way, you know, the opposition, you know, I think the opposition to what these people who kind of drive the train, have been driving the train on this thing, they are the principal stakeholders, the principal stakeholders. Our repeated calls, you know, have been ignored to secure the windows and doors from the weather conditions and the anilism at the Douglas Center. I think this is why we're here today. I think we're here today. You know, we're probably going to look at some proposals from the administration and whoever, I'm not sure what's coming down the pipe, and some proposals that is presented by, you know, the kind of, I will kind of loosely label us, you know, the stakeholders of the Douglas Center. Okay, so I guess the logical question is that, you know, who are the, who are the principal Who are the principal stakeholders? And I think most of us would define the principal stakeholders as those who are surrounding the Douglas, the Douglas Center community when it was originally found, and those of which the Douglas Center essentially serves today. In other words, stakeholders are those who have been touched and impacted by the Douglas Center's rich history and its legacy. But, but it's more than that, it's more than that, okay? You know, I'm proud to say that the Douglas Center is, it does serve people across the community, not just African-American community. I stopped by that gymnasium several times a week, and I could see what's going on. Even in a deteriorated condition, it still serves a lot of people in this community, across the racial barriers. On May 15th, 2017, they had a workshop on the Douglas Center. Douglas alumni, we submitted our plan to the board for consideration. This plan contained a substantial number of support and petitions from the principal stakeholder. There was over 260 petitions that was given to the board to go into the official records. And today, we feel that plan is still a good plan. I'm not sure what's on the table and what's going to be offered, but I think that plan is a good plan. We feel this is, this layout plan design would better amplify the historical integrity of the campus and provide a more aesthetic and well-propagation systematic view of what would best honor the legacy and the property and those stakeholders and patrons through the years. Now, let me just, the other plan that seems to keep coming back and back was the 2014 plan, and I think those cost estimates that's in this packet, which I haven't yet a chance to review, is based on that plan. That plan was offered by the administration. That plan was offered by the administration. Now, some people are going to say, well, it was a Douglas Advisory Committee that did that. That, that is not so, in my understanding, it's not so. It was offered by the administration under the pretext of a Douglas Advisory Committee. I could tell you how that's true, is that the Douglas Advisory Committee did not start to meet until the spring of 2014. But if you look at a copy of that plan, it was already drafted and was there in February 2014. So it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that that plan was already in the, in the view. Now...
Mr. Ford.
Now, I want to thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I know, I kind of, kind of rambled a little bit and kind of veered off, and I want to thank you and the board for the patience allowed me to give these comments. And if, if it's permissible for you, as the discussion goes on, I may come back. Thank you.
Did anyone else have anything they wish to speak on? If you do, we're only here till six, and we've got a regular board meeting, so try not to go as long with Mr. Ford.
My name is Jay Cherry, 204 Johnson, Southwest Live Oak, Florida. I would like to say that I'm a stakeholder at the Douglas Center, and I would like for my commissioner, Commissioner Flemmons, to, just about everything Mr. Ford have said is partially true on some of the items, but as my commissioner in District Two, I would like for him to take some of the things that Mr. Ford have said under consideration. And the restrooms, you guys gave us authority to repair the restrooms, and we did that and did a good job of it. But I don't think one commissioner came out and taking a look at those restrooms. I know Commissioner Fleming came out, but I don't think nobody else came out. Also, Mr. Harris, you promised me that those restrooms would be painted, and that's been over a year ago. And I think if you give us permission to get the restroom painted, we'll get the restroom painted. But I, I just want to say, please consider the stakeholders.
Good evening. My name is Anita Williams, and I'm a member of the Douglas High School Alumni Association. I too will talk to the full board and the city, the county commissioner that covers the Douglas High Center. And I don't think Mr. Cherry should have to beg anybody to paint some restroom, that should be a given. So I would just, you don't have to answer, this is a rhetorical question. I'm wondering if there's anything African American in the county that you all have ever took an interest in and given any money to. I was told at a meeting, you guys said it was not feasible to do the restrooms, and they found somebody on their own to do the restrooms, and it didn't cost a fortune. We pay taxes like everybody else, and we will not continue to be taxed without, you know what they say, taxation without representation is a lie. And we, and we don't have to put up with that. So if they're telling you that you gave a substandard person to do the historical grant application, then that's what happened. So you either want to do it like we're having the Affordable Care Act done, kill it from the inside, let it die, and then we'll say it wasn't going to work anyway. So we don't want to have that. So before you make decisions for us, whatever meetings you have, we need to be in those meetings to talk about those things. If they tell you that the bathroom additions that you want to do are going to take away from having the historical grant application go through, then you should step back and give us some time to see if we can get somebody or you can help us get somebody to work on the historical grant. What you don't do on a historical grant is take somebody out of finance or wherever you pull the person that you pull from to help with the grant and have them call Mr. Ford and ask him for information to be submitted when he doesn't know that that's part of the grant. He, you stopped him to say that the grant that he and Mr. Massey worked on, if somebody calls me for some input for my income taxes, I'm just sending them the information, I'm not working on the taxes.
He, he knew he was there to work on the grant, and it wasn't denied...
But he's not a grant worker. This is the issue.
The issue is, it was not denied.
The grant is going to be denied if it's sent in substandard, that's the issue. It has to meet the historical guidelines to be...
It does, and the site that met the historical guidelines was not the Douglas Center, it was the original Douglas Center. That was two times we sent that grant.
So if you can tell me what, what the denial, what was the reason for the denial?
That it did not meet the historical definition based on that site, based on that site.
Based on that site or based on that grant that was submitted?
The site.
So how does part of it meet the historical definition and other, are we talking the property on the same acreage? So they can, they can weed out parts of the Douglas Center?
No, it was a different piece of property altogether.
Is it within the Douglas Center confines?
Not the site that they, the, Mr. Ford can tell you, what church is that behind that where the original Douglas Center was at?
Douglas High School.
It was Douglas High, I believe, is what it was called.
Right, it was Douglas High School. The grant went in under Douglas High School, which was wrong. That site is the Douglas Center.
So on the grant, then there was, there was one word that was wrong.
No, 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 that's just start, that's the top line. Then it gets down to the history, I can't block 19 or 20, you got to do a historical narrative in there. And that historical narrative was on the Douglas, Douglas High School. Now, like I said, I was just called and said, do you have any information on the Douglas High School? I did not know the difference at the time between the Douglas Center and the Douglas High School. This is coming to information to me too, and when I looked into the history of it, it was the Douglas Center. So that historical narrative within the grant should have reflected some of the things I alluded to. This was the third school in Swanee County that had the name Douglas. It was the Douglas Center. It could have broke down how these things kind of evolved from the beginning. And that would have been more effective. Of course, a historic profession, professional would have known that, and they would know that today, and it would be more effective if you submit a grant with someone who knows what they're doing, and know what language and wording and things like that to put into grant. That's not the only thing, but it takes a professional. Historical grants are a little bit different from road grants and other type grants. They're almost as complicated as a CDG grant, where you hire a consultant to help you with these grants. So we need someone to help us with these historical grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue.
And, and, you know, before you make any decisions, I think that's what I wanted to be clear on, the fact that the person who did the grant, you know, didn't have all the information, and this isn't a reflection on that person, somebody chose a person that doesn't know how to do historical grants. So this is, this is, my whole conversation here is not against anybody. I'm not against anybody, but I'm clearly a Douglas High School student before I'm a citizen of Swanee County, by far. So I'm not here to be against anybody, I'm here to be for the Douglas High School, and we would like, before you vote on anything, move on anything, put bathrooms on anything, let's take a step back and see what we've done wrong. We don't have to put blame on anybody, but we know the grant didn't go in right. I live in an area and have property in an area that people did, made the community a historical community, and it took them a year or so to do that, and those were people that had the funds to do that. It was a big process. So we can't, you know, give two or three months or whatever and, and not do it. But also, in the meantime, while that's trying to be done, I mean, I love, I don't have kids here, but I love the kids that go and use that center, and I think they should get to go into a place that looks good. And fixing a bathroom, I'm just stunned that that was a big thing to have to come and beg someone to make a bathroom present for some kids to use. Now, I also won't let the citizens of my community off the hook if we want to come to you and ask for you to do the right thing, that I expect the people in this room to make sure their friends and neighbors help us, you know, come to you, to work with you as a team to get things done. It just can't be the, you know, a few people that Robert can get to work, because when most organizations we do, we do know, 20% of the people do 80% of the work. And if we're going to get Douglas done, it's going to take all of our community that's here and those that are not here that we can get to come with us to get that done. But on ending, I will say we would not like to have any decisions made today based on the fact that you all have, everybody has been working with substandard and incorrect information. So there needs to be some other meetings. First of all, we need to be clear on what the name of the facility is you're trying to get a historical grant cleared for, because if you're sending the wrong name in, it's going to come back denied every time, because you have to get the correct name for the correct facility and the correct area that you are trying to get historical status for. So I, and I just got into town, so I don't know what you're voting on or what you're going to do here tonight, but I, I just came to make sure you are not voting to do anything before all of us have a clear understanding of what you're voting on and what we're going to get and what you think we think we're going to get. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to clear something up.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not going to try to convince anyone of anything, but I'm going to say this for the record. The application that was made to the Historic Commission with the state is nothing like a CDBG grant application or any other grant application that we fill out. In fact, it's a streamlined version of a grant application, it's done online unlike all others. It's a very abbreviated version of a grant, grant application, and you really simply have to provide information at the fill in the blank form. Mr. Massey clearly did not know anything about the Douglas Center, and that's the reason that Mr. Ford was invited to provide information. And Mr. Massey used the information that Mr. Ford provided and filled out, filled in the blanks on the form and sent it in. The assumption based on the statement that was made was that that grant application is no good. It was based on a false narrative. It was totally misguided at best. To stand up here and say, well, it's bad, it wasn't turned in properly, that isn't true. It was turned in properly. It was a fill in the blank form, and it was information that Mr. Ford provided to Mr. Massey that was utilized in it. Now, let's just get right to the crux of the matter. If you read the response, let's just go right to the response from the state. It doesn't matter if you call it the Douglas High School or the Douglas Center, because they know where the property is, and they responded to the utilization of the schools that were on that site. And the problem that the Historic Commission had with it was very clear and very concise. And what it all boiled down to was the statement that they made in their response letter, and I wish I had it here right now, because I'd love to circulate a copy of it to everyone. The real simple matter boiled down to this. During its term of use, or the life of that as a school, under the school board, it was an integrated school the majority of the time that it was in service. That's what the state said. That isn't what, listen, that's what the state responded with. Mr. Chairman, do I have the floor?
Please, let him speak.
Listen, I respect...
You want to speak, you can speak at the podium.
I respect the fact that people have differences of opinion. I'm just telling you what the state responded with. Now, you can disagree with the state, but what they said was that the majority of the time that it was in use, it was an integrated school, and that it did not, in their opinion, I'm not talking about the county commissioner's opinion, or Mr. Ford's opinion, or my opinion, or anyone else, but their response was that in their opinion, it did not have, it didn't qualify for the historic designation. That's the way they responded. But the, and I'm only going to speak briefly on this issue of the restrooms. When Commissioner Fleming and I met with Mr. Cherry in the restrooms, and we talked about sprucing those things up some, we then had to come back and talk to the Board of County Commissioners about that. And I'm giving you an abbreviated version here, but ultimately what was decided was that the Douglas alumni made a request to get the restrooms up and running, the old restrooms. And we did talk about paint in that restroom before it ever came to the board, and before the board voted to allow the Douglas alumni to go out there, the old existing restroom. So the board voted, and the Douglas alumni went out there and did whatever you did. And best I can remember, Mr. Ford said the board didn't assist, or had, provide any help at all, I think. Didn't the board vote later to reimburse $400 or up to $400 or something of that nature? Is that correct?
Four, four, six hundred, I can't remember.
Four hundred.
It was four hundred.
Okay, so the board did participate by paying some reimbursement toward the, those expenses, and I don't have any idea what the expenses were. But in any event, the larger issue associated with restrooms at the old gymnasium is that, one, they do not bring that gymnasium into compliance with the regulations on the numbers of fixtures that are supposed to be used when you've got gymnasiums being utilized by the public. So that's why new restrooms were drawn, it'd get us closer to having the right number of fixtures associated under the Florida Building Code to meet that need. The older restrooms have, I think, two toilets and maybe one sink or something like that, I can't remember, depends on which one you're in. But that's about the essence of the restroom, so the larger restrooms, the closer to meeting that requirement, period. There's no politics involved in that, and I don't think it's politically correct, it's not a politically correct, challenging issue, that's just the reality associated with it. And I challenge you to check the building code to see if that's true or false. Will it jeopardize an application with Historic Commission? I don't have any idea. I have no idea. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much, when you say you have no idea, but your response on April 3rd was that the state has spoken, so it has no historical significance. Okay, back to the restroom. The reason we asked to do it, Alumni Association, to fix up the restroom was that it was not going to be bought to the board to upgrade those restroom. The Douglas, the Advisory Committee, we met, we discussed it, I, I opposed it, you said that, you know, you were not going to bring it to the board to upgrade those restrooms in the gym. Since you were not going to bring it to the board for approval to upgrade the restroom, that's when I intervened and say, hey, allow us to upgrade the restroom as a self help project. There's no way that we would spend our money to do it, you know, if the county, if the board was going to, if you were to give the recommendation to the board to upgrade those
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Janie Philpott. My address is 858 Southwest 7th Street. I am a Douglas High School alumni. Before there was a Douglas Center, there was a Douglas High School. And if you send information regarding Douglas High School, it was a segregated school. The Douglas Center was an integrated center, because that came far after, well, now, I shouldn't say far after, but it came after Douglas High School was no longer being used as a high school or as a school, period. as a high school or as a school, period. So the Douglas Center came in existence after Douglas High School. When integration happened, then we had a Douglas Center. We had a Swanee High School, Swanee Middle School, or something to that effect. And it was requested that we at least establish a memory or a school in memory of what had previously been. That's why we have a Douglas Center, because before it was Swanee Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. The main purpose of the day's workshop was to discuss future plans and moving forward. Any ideas, discussion from the board or staff on any recommendations for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, when the meeting began, I stated that in December, the main reason, the main goal was the new restrooms on the back and the pavilion. After much, much discussion, it was not a move by the board that we would approve it. So we did move to put on the bathrooms, new restroom on the back of the building, and our main goal was, our thing was, to come back at a workshop pertaining to the pavilion. Okay, the provision has turned, has turned into, you know, what are the future plans? The future plans are, we have phases. We have phases, we, you know, you don't go and just, you're just off the top of your head, just come up with some things. We have to have phases where we phase this thing, and I think I said this plain, I think I made it plain that we're here for, in this workshop, to, to put this pavilion on. I know it's $58,000. That's, that's the direction that I would like to go is, you know, as a commission, as a senate commission in District 2. And I said that the Douglas Center has its priority itself, the buildings. We know that those buildings, when the school board had it, it was dilapidated. They gave it to the county, and that's part of the history. They gave it over to the, to the county at that time in 2009, because they didn't want to put any money into it. They, it was cost prohibitive. When it was given to the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Harris and I sat down and talked, and when I came on this board, the first thing that offered was tear it down. And I went to bat and said that, no, I went to school there. I don't desire to see that building torn down. Now, after much discussion and looking at the overall picture of the Douglas Center, the premises out there, the county tried to give it back to the school board. School board sent us a letter, said that they didn't want it back. So now it falls into the Board of County Commissioners' lap. Now, the ultimate thing is, is what the commission does do to that Douglas Center. And we know, Mr. Ford and I, along with Mr. Harris and other members, know that some of those buildings were just in deplorable state. We, we've taken out, had some asbestos taken out of there, one portion of the area. I, I'll say, we go in phases, and, and I've heard some, some discussions about whether it's a historical site. I know that grants have been written. I know Mr. Massey did the best that he could do. And I know, and they talked to Mr. Ford about writing, giving out the information. The man only took what he had, and I think he did a good job. Dr. Jackson, I don't want to put you on the spot at all. Dr. Jackson, I don't want to put you on the spot. You and I also had conversations on this issue about historical societies. You know well how they work also. I would like for you to come up to the front podium, please.
Alvin Jackson, Economic Development Director. Just want to share that I served on the Florida Historic Commission for 10 years and reviewed grants, or historic grants and their criteria. I was looking for the letter, and basically, based on the letter from the state, they said that that site did not meet the Department of Interior, which is the federal designating or criteria setting for historic properties and sites. And pretty much, I talked to the state, and they indicated that that did not meet the historic criteria for the Department of Interior for restoration. Fifty years is one category, is, is one criteria. It could be considered as a site of historic significance. I was the city manager of Eatonville many years ago, and we had no buildings, but we were able to get the community, the city designated as a site of historic significance, with it being the oldest black incorporated town in the country. But we had no contributing buildings. All the historical buildings had been demolished, or either the buildings that were there did not meet the site or property criteria. And so, you know, what Mr. Harris was basically saying is that the state issued, and I looked at the grant, basically, the grant is very simple application. You provide the information, and the state made a determination, and it was very clear in that determination, that basically that particular site, the buildings, did not meet historical significance. There are architectural standards that the Department of Interior provide to the state to make that argument. So if you demolished the building and you still want to apply as that, that site of being of historical significance based on its history, then you can do that. But the application basically was written based on the historical significance of the building, and it did not meet the Department of Interior criteria. Well, basically, the, the grant application was to restore the physical building or provide dollars for the restoration of the building. You only can restore historically significant buildings that meet the Department of Interior's criteria. I don't have those in, in front of me. Basically, the building, and I've shared this with Mr. Ford, does not meet those criteria. Basically, architecturally, it's not necessarily a, a significant architectural design. Basically, during that period, there, there was an educational design that was provided to all schools. The, basically, the, the construction, nothing significant about the physical construction of the building. And basically, their response was in, was responding to the grant. The purpose of the grant was to get dollars to restore a historical building. And basically, the state responded that we cannot fund those, that building, because it is not of historical significance based on the Department of Interior. Now, if you go to the state and request a designation based on the significant activities and events that occurred on the site, basically, they would entertain that, but that's not restoration dollars. Excuse me? It wouldn't be any dollars. You could get dollars to actually retell a story. It's like a battlefield. Battlefield has no buildings, but it had, battlefields had significant activities and events. And so what happens is that they retell the story, and they designate the site as having historical significance. So there could be dollars with writing the narrative. There could be dollars for a marker, if that's what you request, to help you retell the But the grant request was for dollars to restore a building that the state utilizing the federal criteria, Department of Interior, it did not meet that.
Mr. Doc, before you leave, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Also, Mr. Ford, he wanted a, wanted a analysis done, cost analysis done at the Douglas Center that you asked me about some time ago. You asked me about the cost analysis, you wanted it done. We came, we got that cost analysis, and, and Mr. Derabey and Associates was the one that did that, and they came back with their price. I think I gave you copies, some copies of the, of some dollar amounts. You asked for the cost analysis? You asked for one? Well, we got it. I did, you did ask me for it, but-
I didn't ask you for a copy of it. I didn't ask for a cost analysis to be done.
Well, it was suggested too, but you did ask for it. But we won't get it, we won't, we won't, we won't get into that, but it was-
Let's don't argue about it.
Yeah, it's, it's the fact that I did, we did get this cost analysis, and I think I gave you some copies. We also, and I know this, I have the best interest for the Douglas Center, the very best. I went to school there also. I said, I made that statement back in 2010, when I first got elected, came on board. I still have the best interest for that Douglas Center. And the main purpose is for, is about the children. They need a place that they can go and enjoy themselves, a safe haven. It ain't due to the fact that, that this board, I think, no one was on this board at the time when I first got here, but these guys have been very supportive. We have, we, as we said, that we have worked on, there have been grants worked on. I'm not a grant writer. I don't even have a clue. My job is to direct this man to get what we're supposed to get done and bring it back, bring the findings and facts back. I think it's been done. We went to Washington DC. I had the opportunity to talk with Mr. Dunn, one of the senators up there. And, and maybe I shouldn't say this, it's Marco Rubio, they made a visit here, unannounced. Now, I don't, you know, I, I, we've, we've tried and tried to get grants, tried to get funding for that Douglas Center, and I just don't, you know, know what asking is.
Thank you. One second, Mr. Ford. I just want to kind of touch on something that he said and something that you mentioned. You mentioned that the goal of the Douglas alumni is to preserve the legacy. I mean, you've had many discussions on this, and we agree on that. And I think what the board has been working on, and this has kind of been left out of the conversation today, is a plan that preserves that legacy. And the conversations that we've had is, what does that plan consist of? Does it consist on a full remodel of the Douglas Center? No, we can't afford it. And I think it's kind of been unfair to the board today, is the board has been actively working on different projects at the Douglas Center. Some projects are a lot more easy to obtain than others. This historical grant for remodeling these buildings, I mean, whether you like it or not, is probably not a reality. But yet, we apply for one grant from Parks and Rec to redo a playground for $50,000, and we're awarded like that. So that's part of what the future planning of this is, is we're trying to figure out where's it going to be best to do. Do we remodel the playground that's already there? Do we relocate it? There's a lot, I mean, we got $50,000 to spend on park enhancements at the Douglas Center. We don't want to squander it going somewhere that we may do something a couple of years down the road that it's unnecessary. So today, we're kind of going back and forth on what's happened in the past, and we really need to look on where we're going with this, because we, we are getting grants on behalf of the Douglas Center, and we got to figure out a path that we're going to go down to how we're going to use them that's going to be best utilized for that center. If we do build a, we're, we're working on the gymnasium, adding bathrooms, like them or don't like them. The board voted to do it at the last meeting. If the board puts a pavilion on there, if we remodel the bathrooms, you're, you're working on an area that is now going to be more enticing to children to come play. And you've got to come up with a long-term plan for the other side of the street there, which is, has the, the older buildings, because you, we've talked about it before, it's, you, it's a whole center, and, and parts of it, you're going to have, we, we have to come up with a plan for. And Parks and Rec, I believe, is part of that plan. I think we got, there's a lot more money available there down the road than looking for historical grants to restore the buildings. I don't think you lose your legacy by, if we go about it the right way, on what Dr. Jackson was just touching on, on, on telling the story. The story is what's remembered. People in my generation don't remember that school the same way people in your generation do. It was a middle school when I came along. And so we're only a couple of generations away for it being nothing but an old building. I mean, that's what my kids are going to remember it as if we don't tell the story. And that's what we got to look at, is how to preserve it, the story. The building to the next generation is just going to be a building. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of respond on the cost analysis, I'm going to kind of give you my version of the cost analysis, how it got put forward at a March 29th Advisory Meeting, coming out of the workshop. It was two plans going into the workshop, as I recall.
I don't mean to stop you. We've only got 50 minutes left.
Sure, sure. I'm going to get, I'm going to get a quick-
If we're going back and forth on back, past things, I mean, he said, she said, it's not being productive in our workshop, and we're not getting anywhere.
Right, but I just want to kind of set the, the record straight. At that March 29th Advisory Meeting, we had two proposals, the 2014 Plan and the Plan that we presented to the workshop on March 15th. When we get to the March 29th meeting, the third plan comes out by Commissioner Fleming, you know, which we had never seen before, with no input from the stakeholders. So the discussion came up, from one member said, well, well, we got three plans, we need a cost analysis on the three plans to see which one would be more viable. So the proposal that went forward was to do a cost analysis on the three plans, but it was contracted with Mr. Derabey to do the one plan, which was the 2014 Plan. It was nothing ever done on the March 15th Plan or the, or March 20th Layout Plan. Nothing went forward, just to kind of set, set the-
Mr. Harris, just a question, because I'm, the, the Derabey Plan, when he gave the proposal, that was for a remodel of the buildings, for three buildings, correct?
What Mr. Derabey was requested to provide was an estimate on what it would cost to essentially, this isn't his words, but essentially renovate or restore, try to restore close to original condition, three of the buildings. Those three buildings, the first one would be the, the whole wing that runs parallel with the street on the north side.
Which was the original building, I believe, the, the, the front two.
Whole wing, right there, very annoying. Second building was cafeteria, so it skipped over a wing, went to cafeteria. The third building- The third building is the, I think what some call the ag building.
The ag building.
One, two, three, four, four buildings.
It's four buildings. It's the front wing, the cafeteria, and the ag building.
Is up there near the street. And I'm going on memory, okay, so I can pull that, but you've got a copy of what he sent back.
Right. You know, just to kind of point at what you, when you gave me a copy that, when I stopped by the office, of Mr. Harris, you took me back to your office, and you told me that those plans, those cost analysis were, was for that 2014 plan, which include half of that first wing, the cafeteria, the ag building, and the little cutoff from the ag building. Those were the four buildings.
That may be correct.
I know I'm correct on it, but you know, you did not do the cost analysis.
I'm not going to argue with you, Mr. Ford. I just said it's in the packet, so what I said was I'm going on memory.
Right, right.
Ignore that fact, because you're trying to make a point here about me.
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir. I was, I was incorrect, but Commissioner Fleming said.
You said from the beginning of the time that you started talking, now listen, I'll be civil with you if you want to be civil with me.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to play this they game and try to portray that I'm.
Yes, sir.
Trying to inflict something here that I'm not.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to be very forthright.
Yes, sir.
The information's in the packet.
Yes, sir.
So whatever is in this packet is what Mr. Derabey actually ran estimates on.
Yes, sir.
Half of that first wing, and that's what it is.
Is 6,881 feet, so that probably is half.
Huh? It's the whole thing.
Well, going back to my point, I was, before you interjected, Mr. Harris, I was responding to what Mr. Commissioner Fleming was talking about. And my point was that the advisory committee asked for the total analysis on the three proposals, in which, which that did not happen.
What's that?
And I kind of, and if you feel offended at some things I said right there, you know, you know, that's up to you if you want to be offended or not. It's not, it was not my intention, you know, to rub you the wrong way. Okay, to the parks, and the parks that there, Mr. Chairman, you know, we asked the Parks and Rec for that grant, for the, we, the Douglas alumni, to put that $50,000 grant in there for the Douglas Center, and in that, March 15th, sir?
The, the board asked them to.
Right, right. I, I understand.
The board, I understand. Y'all brought it forth. It was a joint effort.
Right, we asked, we asked the Parks and Rec to apply for the grant. When they apply for the grant, they got to get the board's approval.
Right.
But we, we understand the technical part of that. So, 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 and we appreciate you approving the Parks and Rec applying for that grant. And we do need a location for it. And, 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 and the title of this workshop was to discuss the future of the Douglas Center. And I thought we was going to look at the proposals in the past, so we could kind of come to agreement on what layout plan going forward would best serve, you know, the legacy and the memory of the Douglas Center. I know we can't keep that whole building out, that whole compound out there. You know, you know, we, we are well of that, so, you know, and I, and I, and our proposal and from the stakeholders is that we need to get a couple of them out there and put in a, a legacy park out there, which the Douglas alumni were fun, put in a fountain with some, you know, brick, memorial bricks around there, to kind of tell that story that, you know, what you was talking about. So this is what we want.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is my district, and I've had, I've heard stories of commissioners getting involved in other districts and getting in trouble with their electorate. I'm not going to get involved with the electorate on this thing, but as a representative of my district, the stakeholders in my district are those taxpayers who fund and who, who are responsible to make sure their taxes go to take care of county property. It's, they don't, they're not, they don't, their interest is, is completely monetary, unless they've graduated from there, and, and some of them have. They don't have the interest that you guys have, who have graduated, went to school there, and you have the deep sentimental connection to that school that is extremely important. But what I will say is this, when I look at, and Mr. Ford sent me this packet with four different designs in it, over the history of, of what we, some of them are official, some of them are unofficial, some of them are just ideas. The problem that we have here, folks, is that we don't have, we don't have what it, what Douglas Dunn looks like, as one of you said. What's it going to look like when Douglas is done? We have no idea what the community wants. I don't think the community knows what they want. We can't get tax dollars from the federal or state government to rebuild or restore your school. And I'm not sure that would be a good, that would be a good wise way of spending tax dollars anyway. But as the chairman said, telling the story is the most important thing that you can do, keeping the story alive, and then allowing the property to be used for the benefit of the community. That's, that's where we need to be heading in. And we all got to come up with some idea and come to a consensus on, on strategic plan before we do anything else there. But we do know one thing, we can't continue to use the gymnasium if it's out of code. We're responsible for that. We're, we're the, we're the county. We're, we're the guys that make the decision on it. And the bathrooms bring it up to code. So that's why the bathrooms are getting done. The pavilion, we backed off of, just simply to understand what's the, what, what does Douglas Dunn look like. And, and that's what I'm trying to drive at. Let's come to a strategic plan that's going to have, in the end of it, a picture of what you want at the Douglas Center. And I'm good with any of it.
I know you said only appear one time, but I've got a.
No, I didn't, you, go ahead.
Just re-identify yourself, please.
I'm Janie Philp.
We got short members, man. Go ahead.
I've got lots of questions, but I'm just going to ask one. Would the board consider selling the property to a private individual?
We'll give it to them.
You would give it to them?
You own it?
Is that yes? If you're going to give it to me.
One of, one of the things that I had wrote down for discussion today was the same thing we did under a historical commission for the train depot. We created a historical commission.
Mm-hmm.
And that historical commission was in task with the responsibility of the care and maintenance of that building, as well as applying for grants for that building. That was one of my, I've, I've got it written down here on my notes today as one of the proposals that I wanted to talk about. Now, we kind of got off in the weeds on some of our discussion and haven't done a lot on actual planning, but yes, I would like to see the board consider creating some kind of, call it the Douglas Historical Commission, and the, we can deed the property to them with the board so deemed, and.
Deed it to me?
I can't deed it to an individual.
You just said you would give it to me.
I would, but I'm not the board. I'm a member.
Would the board consider that, selling the property to a private individual?
I'll refer to our attorney, so I don't get us in any hot water.
To be able to sell it to a private individual, we still have to go through the surplus, the statutory surplus declaration of Douglas Center as surplus property. Once you have declared a surplus property, it's limited in what you can offer it to. If you offer it to another governmental entity or to a nonprofit organization, it gets priority over offering it to an individual. If you're going to offer it to an individual, it has to be put up for public auction, and then they bid on it for that process.
I know, but that's.
Somebody might have plenty to make.
That's the legal process.
But I think that's what the chairman, what the chairman was suggesting, and is part of the process that we've done before, to work with a private bill, I mean, not a private building, but with a group of private individuals that are, as a nonprofit organization, is to declare it a surplus. This organization then is contractually bound to the commissioners to do something with the property, you know, and that's like with the Historical Society, Historical Commission over there at the other building, you know, they're bound by, you know, an agreement with the, the commission to take, take care of that, and they keep doing what they're doing over there.
And they house the museum there, they, they lease the building out for weddings, showers, political rallies, different things, as a source of income to help fund the building, but.
Well, that could be some of the things we might have.
That's why, that's why I've got it on my list. I am very interested in, in, in that, if the board so, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I want to talk to attorney.
Yes, sir.
Also, on that, when, when you say to a private entity, that private entity, where they have a certain time to make that certain type of improvement to that facility.
Now, now, make sure that you're understanding.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm asking the question.
A nonprofit, yes. And as one of the conditions that, of the board granting it to them, you would put a condition in there that such and such has to be done, some improvement done, some manner of improvement, what amount of improvements that you want done during a specific period of time?
So you can give a time.
Otherwise, it would have, like, you know, then it would revert back to the county if it didn't go that way.
That's the question that I had. There's a, there's a former school board member that we had a conversation, when it was reverted over to Board of County Commissioners, and the statement was made that when it was reverted, you know, the county had a certain time to make some type of improvement, which there wasn't done, no governmental entity went that, went in that direction. So it reverted back to the Board of County Commissioners. That's when I said the nonprofit, would that be, would that clause be in there of just what to come about?
Yes, sir. Like I said, you know, once you go through the process.
If, if we entertain this, we craft the agreement, as far as i- if you want to see, I mean, you, you got to be realistic with them, give time for grant applications and fundraising, but if you put on a timeline for certain renovation to be done, or certain improvements to be made, then that committee has to adhere to it and keep to it, or then a reverter clause, so to speak, goes back in there. But she walked out, but she's on the right track, because that's.
I had this on one of my footnotes, too.
Yeah, this is one of the things, and, and I use the precedent from the Historical Commission.
I just have a question before time is over. I was listening to the conversations with.
Please, take your name and address, please, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Mary Elizabeth Herring Holland. I, I live at 13531, 150th Place B in Livo, Florida, and I am part of the Douglas Alumni also, but I, we were demanded to go to Swanee High when I was in 10th grade, so, and I do love Douglas, and for the record, I would want it to stay there and be refurbished. I don't know what you, we would find things to use it for, but I kept listening, and I kept hearing that you needed a grant. If you don't get a grant, so you wouldn't do anything for the Douglas Center if you don't get one.
Not as far as remodeling, no, ma'am. It's about $2.6 million to remodel it.
But that's with your figures, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of that, when I look.
But by our figures, what we, we have to go through certain hurdles, obstacles, so to speak, as far as it being a public building, requirements and building codes that we have to follow, and that's the numbers that it comes back as.
And if you don't, then what, what, were your options there? Is that what we're getting to now?
That's what we're discussing. We haven't discussed any of the options, but I mean, if, if we didn't, yes.
You would not do anything to the, this board would not do anything to help with that facility over there?
As far as remodeling, at this.
Yeah, well, you'd have to do that in order to have children attend there, and I would think in that community, I would think that would be quite important to have children over there, so that they could play and have a good time. And I'm always overwhelmed, and I, I really feel really good when I pass through there and I see the kids out there playing, and I think that's a good thing to have over there. So.
Well, no, no, I mean, I don't disagree with you. That's why we're looking at the Parks and Recs grants, that's why we've looked at the different things on the bathrooms, the pavilions. Yes, the kids playing there, but it's, sitting through the budget, our budget meetings and our budget workshops, the, to be realistic on the money, as far as a remodel without a grant, is, I mean, I, I don't even think Mr. Ford would say that we had the $2.6 million to do that, if that's what it costs.
I don't think that's what it cost, but I would have thought you wouldn't do it all at one time. You would probably stick with gymnasium where you would have the children. And, and who maintains that, even now, with the facilities over there? With, is that what the board does?
Mm-hmm.
So you do the bathrooms and you have someone with upkeep?
I don't know if, but I'd have to let him.
Mr.?
Mark's still here.
Yeah, he's back there.
Speak, speak to the issue of maintenance over there on the gymnasium, if you can.
Mark is our facilities director for Swanee County. What question in, in particular did you have?
Are we providing the maintenance?
We provide maintenance at request of PAL. PAL has been in charge of the, not PAL, it is PAL, right? Well, PAL, Mr. Cherry. Mr. Cherry has a request, we come over and we tend to his requests as needed. In the last six years, all the roofing issues have been addressed over there. There's been probably $200,000 worth of roofing issues addressed on that facility alone.
That's when we put the new roof on?
That was $78,000 for the, for the membrane roof on top, and then we had the frame and structure and metal roofed areas around that, the lower section.
Any other questions from Mr. Mark?
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Anita Williams again. I actually want to go back to Commissioner Richardson, I think, who said we need to know what we're doing, and, and actually, that's a good issue, because I'm trying to understand the 2.6 million. So I have two, and I gave Mr. Harris. The, the, this 2014 plan, the, has the PAL wing, gym, cafeteria, ag building, and the gym, those four places. This plan that you're looking at, is that the 2.6 million?
I believe that's the building referred to. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I was wondering, when you all meet, is it like the board and the exec committee from DHS? Because there's a plan that they had, and I'm not sure, when you talk about the analysis, where they want it, and, and I think you would want to keep what the community thinks, if it comes out less or the right, would be the library ring, the cafeteria, the PAL wing, and the gymnasium. So I'm wondering, when you got the 2.6 million, was this one that the exec committee, Mr. Ford can correct me if I'm wrong, that they wanted this to be looked at as a possibility? And then the other question I'm hearing, I'm wondering, Mr. Fleming said you could go in phases. On every plan, we have the gymnasium, and you have 58,000, you spent 78,000 on the roof. So I'm just wondering if you get to a place and you phase it out, that's 140,000 you've spent already, or you have, you spent 80 and you have 50 something, and you did the roofs. Can, can, when we, you get the exec committee together and get input from the community on which plan, first of all, and then you target one by one, maybe instead of kind of doing redundant piecemeal, do the roof, do the bathroom, do the this, you can say, if we're going to use the 2015 March plan that they want, we have enough grants to start on the gymnasium and focus on the gymnasium. Is the gymnasium available to use money from the Parks and Rec? Because they have football out of that gym, they have basketball league, so wouldn't that fall under Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I don't believe it currently falls under Parks and Rec.
I can answer part of that.
Go ahead.
Part of the answer is yes, and the way that I had a conversation with Mr. Scott and Jason that works for Mr. Scott, and what the commissioners have is three or four items on there that the grant that was applied for, that we obtained, to undertake improvements at the Douglas Center, includes a new playground, it includes upgrades to the soccer field slash football field and softball fields. There may have been one other thing on there, but that.
Basketball courts.
Picnic shelter.
Basketball courts weren't included.
Pavilion picnic shelter.
They gave us some estimates on some other things, but so far as covering some expense with available grant money, it was the upgrades to those fields and the new playground.
Yeah.
And I think the concern that's been expressed over time was the playground where it exists today is on a busy curve out there on the northeast corner, and there's been a desire to redo that playground and maybe put it someplace else on the property and get it away from, farther away from the road.
Too close to the road.
So yes, grant funds are available right now for those improvements.
So I'm going to go back to the first question, before we start making voting and decision.
We're not voting.
Good. So this plan. So this plan is the commission plan, correct?
The commission has never adopted a plan.
Okay, but this is your.
That's proposals that were submitted to the commission.
So, back to Mr. Richardson, who said you have to know what you want. So the people who have spoken from the exec committee from the Douglas High School alumni, I think this was the plan that they wanted to have some discussion on, is that going to happen?
Yeah, I think part of the issue that you run into, and Mr. Pravat can.
Because it's all for building.
It is, but, and me and Mr. Ford have had this conversation many a time when it comes to spending local taxpayer money on the rehab of a building, is you have to have an end use for that building. We cannot do it just for the sake of saying, let's redo it. And we've talked several times about what's the purpose, what are we going to do, what are we going to call it once it's done, what are we going to utilize it for? And this all goes back to when the school board gave it to the county. The school board says in it, it has to have a governmental use. So to expend taxpayer dollars on it, I believe that you have to have a governmental use for it, and I could be wrong, so I mean, if I am.
Could it be governmental or could it be county resident?
Yeah, I have to refer up here.
Well, for just uses recreational use would be a governmental use for the county. Now, if you have another particular purpose for it, a private nonprofit use only, then that is not a governmental use. Okay, so you can't, you've got to see how the money's going to be spent.
So the only difference I see you have is the library wing and the ag building, so that's your only two building differences. And I think when you say you talked to Mr. Ford, this is why I'm asking, do you talk to a committee?
No.
Because it needs to be a discussion back and forth, the exec committee brings ideas from the.
I've met, I've met with the committee once or twice, but most of my conversations go back and forth if I'm talking about the Douglas Center, it's with Mr. Ford.
So, when you talked about the historical committee, et cetera, I'm wondering, Mr. Ford would definitely be the lead on that because he does all the work, but that leads it, I mean, on our side.
I'm saying.
But that leads a lot of.
Committee like that, like with the historical commission that we currently have, that is a board-appointed commission.
Well, this wouldn't have to be a, I'm not asking for, I just used that.
I know, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, the Douglas High School Committee meets with you particularly to hash out these things, so when it comes to this meeting, we don't have to use up all the time going into the minutia. We've already gone in the mud and we're up at the top, skimming the level, because now a lot of people here don't know about these different schematics that Mr. Ford and the DHS Committee like. So if Mr. Ford could put a committee together that meets with either all of you or whomever, particularly it has to include Mr. Fleming, to discuss, you know, to go back and forth on, and Mr. Jackson should be there, because the one thing, if it comes that we cannot do the historical grant, clearly, I know some people in other states that write grants, you all could look for grants that are for minorities in sports, or minorities in education or whatever. You can go outside and look for grants if you have a committee, and then we can look for people to help Mr. Massey or whatever, do the grants. But there can be grants to help the county with this, but before you get to that, back to what Mr. Richardson said is, we need to know what we're looking for grant money from, and it seems that this 2014 budget plan is not the one that the DHS alumni prefers, and I thought we wanted, one, what that community preferred, but also when you get to spending all county people's money, I'm not sure if my family lives in that district, I'm not even sure. And there are people who don't live in that district that went to that school, and they want their tax dollars spent over there, Mr. Richardson. And I know you have to have your fiduciary responsibility cover the whole county, and we wouldn't want to appear today as if we wanted some type of preferential treatment. What we do want is an even and level playing field. And I know it's not in the county, and I know I'm a carpetbagger just coming back, but, you know, I look at all the money they came up with to spend on the craps house. They found the money some kind of way, and I don't even see many people down there like I see kids when I'm at the gym. So I just want to, you know, throw that in, that there's money to be found, I want to make sure, you know, people who are not in the second district that are here know that we're not trying to, you know, pull money from whatever districts, other districts there are. We just want to make sure that we get some fair quid pro quo of our tax dollars back when it comes to things that we want. And I haven't been here in 30 years, but I just, I'm just trying to think if I know anything African-American here, that the county's gone out and worked extremely hard to get some funds and get something to make the community proud. And so if, I'm going to leave by saying, also on Mr. Jackson, once you decide on maybe what this cost analysis is, kind of look at what you want to do before we start talking about money, look at the one that Mr. Ford and his working committee seems to prefer, it may be less, it may be more, see if there's some in your meetings, some governmental activity the library can be used for, because that's the only building that's different on here. And then maybe Mr. Jackson can help us get some money, once you figure that out, he can help us get money, show us how to get the money on markers and events and things like that you want to have, that they will fund, which would be outside of going to get grants from philanthropists and grants that are targeted specifically for a specific group of people. So in summation, I hope that we can get from Mr. Ford a committee that will meet with you all, that this will be entertained, the March 2017 paperwork, so we're not working, as Mr. Richardson said, blind. When you come back to the meeting, you can say, well, we discussed these plans, 2014 is 2.6, the March 15th is 2.8 or 2.0, you know, we're going to vote on which one we're going to take, how we're going to try to get the money, the historical designation is out. I don't think that Mr. Ford and the executive committee are set in stone on the historical designation, but what they are set on is, they want some work done, they want some upgrades, they want the kids, not just African-Americans kids, black, white, brown, and yellow, anyone who wants to go in that neighborhood. And I think, you know, it's a win-win situation if you make it conducive to people feeling safe and comfortable going in that area. I mean, you're never going to get a mixed, cross-cultural use of the place when it's not aesthetically pleasing to people who are not from that community. So that's all I have to say on that, and thank you guys for having the talk.
Thank you.
Before Ms. Williams, before you sit down, I think it's a good idea, we just mentioned about the Crap Mansion, but I don't know whether the attorney down there, he could help me out or straighten me out. I think that through CRA funding, I think, I talked with the city councilman, I've been in talk with the city councilman about CRA money. With CRA money, you can get some things done in that community. That area over there is a blighted community, and I talked with the councilman, and he did state that he was going to ask for some funding if CRA stretched to that area. Now, whether it happened, I don't know, but that, those are city projects. And that Crap Mansion was a city project, and it's true what you said. Now, also, I appointed a committee that only reports back to the board, and the committee that I appointed, we met in 2015, 16, too, I think. And with this drawing that I had, and I brought it back on recommendations on putting bathrooms and the restrooms on the back of the gymnasium, and the committee, it was six of us on that committee, so I said that that was the only committee that will report to the Board of the County Commissioners, and that's how we went with that. Now, I, Mr.
Well, if I can interject just something, Mr. Fleming. I think that, back to Mr. Richardson, if you don't want to keep doing piecemeal things, you don't want to start putting bathrooms up before you decide on what is going to be done to the place, because it's just different in and out.
I understand what you're saying. We have, we're doing it in phases, and I.
But I think before you go into phases, you need a plan. What is it going to look like? Because if not, it looks like these trailers where people keep adding something.
It does.
Yeah.
To the back of them.
And all of our discussions from the time that we've started discussing the Douglas Center, the reason why the board has moved forward with the gymnasium is.
And did not.
That has always been in every plan. There's not a plan alive that does not include the gymnasium. It is not cut out of any plan, and I don't see it being cut out of any plan.
But that's what I said, sir, on both of these earlier, I said they were in there, but still, you don't want to do it piecemeal. You want to have an idea. If you're going to go for grants for the one that Mr. Ford gave me that they like, if you're going to go for a plan, you need to know what the gym is going to look like as it pertains to what the agricultural building, or the library, or the PAL wing, or the cafeteria is going to look like. It should not look like a mobile home, somebody every year adds some piece of structure to the back and the side and all of that. It has to have a cohesive, flowing, patterned look. We don't just want money spent for money to be spent. I want to be very clear on that. That's why I have a question about putting these bathrooms on. We don't want your money spent, because I'm a taxpayer, and if you just ran out and put some bathrooms on the back of something, and maybe the next, the building across from it is going to look a different way, well, then that's just a waste of money. So I know the gymnasium is going to be there, but you've got to vote on what you're going to keep, what the outside is going to look like, what the, which buildings you're going to keep. You know, they're all kind of new modular things and stuff, you know, I'm on a board that we do low-income development that looks very good. So, you know, there may be some other things we need to look at that's sustainable that can be done, but you can't just add some bathrooms and you don't know what the other three sites are going to look like. So you want to get the most bang for your money, and I don't think Mr. Ford and the exec committee from Douglas cares about how long you take to do it, as long as they see that it has some order, it's moving in the right direction, they are involved, it's a two-way street, and it looks feasible and it looks doable, and it's going to be good for the whole community. What I don't want to have done is it gets thrown up any kind of way, and let's be clear, this is a segregated town, period. People have to feel comfortable passing Walker Street, coming to the Douglas Center to do stuff, and you do that by changing the status quo and how you make it look, what is appealing, what is inviting, what looks like other places in town or wherever they go, what looks like that. So, you know, I'm not here to antagonize anybody, Mr. Harris, I know Mr. Ford was not trying to ride you, but you know, this is, I'm just getting back. And they've been dealing with this for a long time, and you know, we don't want to play the race card, but I mean, we were born and raised in Livock, and a lot of things have changed and a lot of things have not. So if you see people get on edge sometimes, that, you know, that just goes to, you know, what we endured having to go to Douglas High. I'm one of the first people that integrated Swanee High School, and excuse my French, it was a bitch. So, nobody's here mad at anybody. We just want to get what everybody else gets, but we also want to be fair in the use of the money. You know, we want to take into effect the money that our tax dollars you're using and white, yellow, brown people's money, too. But we also want, when it's done, for the Douglas Center to not be a place for black folks.
Right.
We don't. We want it to be a place where your kids will come, the PAL is there, the sheriff patrols the area, you know, make people feel safe, you know, make it be a community mingler, because what we know, I was a cheerleader from Swanee High, and you know what changed the culture of the real racist folks in Livock?
Sports.
Sports. Sports will do it every time. He might be a nigger on the street, but when he can run touchdowns and do big things, he's a baller. So we just want to, we want black, brown, yellow, white at the Douglas Center. We don't want the Douglas Center made for us, we want the Douglas Center made for everybody. So when you say your tax people's dollars have to be used, you have to have fiduciary responsibility and make sure it's done right. But we don't want them to say they fixed that gym and everything for the black folks with our money. We want them to say, we love this Douglas Center that they fixed up and it's inviting, and all of us feel welcome and open. We don't want just black folks working there, or volunteering there, or playing there. We want some other colored kids on the PAL football league. We want some other kids being cheerleaders for those kids playing football, or basketball, or whatever they do there. We cannot continue to let the Douglas Center be something that people in Livock think is for black folks, because it's not. The world is changing.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just want to, just want to say, Ms. Williams, I appreciate your comments. I want to clarify one thing. I didn't mean for it to come out that my folk are going to question it that way. What I meant for it to say is that, that these are not the only stakeholders that are involved in this. The whole entire county is a stakeholder when it comes to county property and it comes to community types of property. We really, my whole desire is, is to, just like yours, to see that whatever comes out of this property is used for the whole of the county, for the whole of the community. Yes, you're going to, your communities are going to benefit from it more so than people down in Branford, but we see folks down in Branford, 4-H members, all types of groups that are utilizing facilities all over the county, just like churches are integrated with each other, not just drawn by sectarian lines or by denominational lines, but they're all working together. That's the purpose, I think, that we could, that's the greatest purpose that we could drive with this piece of property, is to bring the people together. Now, in response to, Mr. Chairman, in response to your suggestion as to potentially looking at a group, a historical commission or something, picking together a group that could deal with this, I think it's a great idea, so long as it involves people throughout the county and not just the community, not just the specific association, the.
You can create a commission, and you can staff it how the board sees fit. You can, the historical commission that is currently in place has members, I don't remember how many members they have, but I know at least five of them are appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and which typically runs in line with district lines. You usually appoint a representative from your district, each district to go there.
And as far as the gymnasium is concerned, he's right. It's one of those things that's on everyone's idea, conceptualization of what the future's going to hold, it needs to be dealt with. From the county's perspective, it needs to be dealt with, but the problem with phases, no matter what you do, is you can start on phase one, before you get to phase two, more opinions are going to be added, and that can be changed. Boards change. Boards change hands. Elections happen. People with different ideas. If we can come together with a strategic plan and say, "Absolutely no changes. Let's do it," even if it takes 20 years, then it's the best way to go. But again, that's the, that's always the risk.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm willing to listen to anyone's ideas at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Say something real quick.
Yep, we're running out of time, but go ahead.
Lots of comments about the different plans not being priced out. I'm gonna read a statement that's in the response that came back from Mr. D'Robbie. He says, "These costs are on a per-square-foot basis, so they can be applied to any building." So those buildings are all built very similarly. So, and there's a schedule on here of the per-square-foot prices for whatever number of buildings or different buildings, those same numbers can be applied on a per-square-foot basis.
Ms. Chairman, I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
We've spent approximately two hours here. The last meeting we had, when we decided to have a workshop, was to come up with a plan. We've all, we understand we need a plan. The point of contention at the last meeting that drove us to this workshop was the gymnasium, we knew we were gonna approve the bathrooms on it to bring them up to code, but the point of contention was the pavilion, would it be attached to the, to the back of the gymnasium or would there be a few freestanding, smaller pavilions around the property? So we've just used this two hours to hear all the history, but we've not done anything like the workshop was supposed to be for tonight. So we're gonna have to go to another workshop and start from scratch, now that we've heard everything, a lot of spirited conversation. But the reason we came to this workshop was to decide about the pavilions and the differences of the pavilions. That was the next step. We do need a master plan. You can't get anywhere without goals and plans. So we were headed in that direction, but tonight, we failed to get there. I'm confident we will get there for the good of everybody in the county. But we missed it tonight by not discussing what we came to discuss about, do we want a single large pavilion attached to the gymnasium or do we want multiple smaller pavilions? That was why we came to this workshop to start with. So we got about four minutes left, and we probably, probably need to take a recess now and then go to our next meeting. But just for those of y'all that weren't in our last meeting, that's why we actually had this workshop, to decide what to do with the pavilion, which would have been the next step.
But that should be the next step.
And I understand where you're coming from, because we were discussing this in the meeting and knew we needed to discuss it more, but since we can't do it anywhere but right here in front of everybody, we had to call a workshop. So we're gonna have to call another one.
Yeah, and I tell you, there's been some interest by the public shown for taking responsibility for the building, and I'm all in favor of us developing a committee.
And it sounds like the recreational side of it is very important to them as well.
With a deadline to make some of it and us go from there.
I just have a question. For the FR, DAP grant, is there a deadline for usage for those funds?
For that.
That's the, that's the...
That's what Mr. Sessions is saying. My name is Tammy Moll, and I live at 619th Street. If we don't want to lose those dollars in that grant money, if we're talking about doing those, you know, two playgrounds to that gym.
We're not gonna lose that if, no, 'cause if, push comes to shove, if there's a deadline on it and the deadline's approaching and nobody can come to a consensus on it, we're gonna approve what we got.
And that's done by Mr. Scott, Parks and Rec.
But I would like to see something, a better enhancement of it, but if push comes to shove, before we give it back, we'll approve what we got, where we got it. No, we're not gonna let it go anywhere.
No, we're not.
But I would like, if, for the board to discuss, maybe in the board meeting, but we can't make a decision now, tasking maybe the county attorney to look at some options for some commissions or similar to the historical commission. And I would say that we do it, though, with the gymnasium not a part of it. And move forward from there and give that committee the free rein to apply for grants, to fundraise, to plan, a master plan on that facility, how that committee sees fit, save what buildings that committee sees fit to save, and find a way to fund it.
Mr. Chairman, would that be an additional agenda item?
No, it's on the agenda tonight to discuss the workshop items.
I know that is on there, but if it's talking mainly about discuss what possible action that you wanna do at that time.
Well, I mean, we wouldn't be voting to actually appoint it. We would just, I would just ask us in that time maybe to give the attorney the free rein to come up with an agreement and a plan that would give us time to review and look at. Mr. Ford, I can tell you, you got one more comment before we close it out?
Yes, sir. It's just a, you know, comment about the board. I think it's a good direction to go in, because most of the people I talk to does not have any confidence in any recommendation that's come from that Douglas Advisory Committee that Mr. Fleming has says that nothing's gonna come to the board unless it's come through him and that advisory committee. So I think that would be a better direction.
Well, I'm not saying that, not saying that it come to me. I said come through the commission, recommend, recommend to the commission.
That's the same thing. It won't come to the commission until it come through you and them.
And we understand where you're going with that, but one thing I can tell you, if we create this commission and call it the Douglas High Historical Commission, the one thing it'll do for you is cut the Board of County Commissioners, that's your business.
Historical commission.
It gives you the free rein to go fundraise and raise grants and do it on you, and you ain't gotta come back to this board and ask this board to do it.
No, 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 we don't wanna do that.
That's how the historical commission is set up. Yes, ma'am.
No, no, I didn't say, I didn't mean to upset you. What I would like is some kind of advisory committee that works with the commission, because the commission has to be walking back and forth. It's like whatever the...
I'm not sure.
I got a list.
So do they contact the board?
When we do make recommendations.
That's what we want, that kind of...
Well, we got a board meeting starting at 6 o'clock, so we're gonna close out the workshop.
I might, Mr. Chairman, one thing. One thing, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna close this workshop, but I'm pleased to see everybody here. We've had a lot of discussions about Douglas Center over the years, and I don't see all these faces out here whenever it comes time, when that's on the agenda. So I would like to request, since I'm gonna be making contacts with all these folks, I'm taking a yellow pad and I'm sticking it outside the door over here, and if you would please, put your name and address and a telephone number or an email address on there so that you can be contacted and you could be part of the process, so that if I'm gonna be directed to deal with it. Thank you.
Before you, before you get out, I do wanna say, I wanna thank everybody for coming, by the way, 'cause it was educational to me, and I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
I do too. Thank you. We'll be starting our county commissioner meeting, say, in five minutes, if y'all need to take a quick break.